I think now my mic is unmuted.
Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for November 3, 2025. The first matter we have on the agenda is the minutes of approval for October 20, 2025. Have any of the board members have any comments or corrections? No, if you weren't here, you just have to stay. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 20, 2025 as permitted.
Okay. I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
In opposition, hearing none, and Mr. Tenza was in present, so he's not voting. So the minutes are approved as is. Three in favor, zero against, and one abstain. Okay, moving along, we have continued business. Defendive subdivision 129 Llewellyn Street and 115 Christian Street. Excuse me. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Christian Hill Homes, LLC to subdivide the property at the above address into 17 lots and construct a new single-family home on each lot. The subject property is located in a suburban, single-family zoning district. The project requires definitive subdivision approval from the planning board under Lowell subdivision of land regulations. We were here a couple of weeks ago, had public hearing. The matter was continued to tonight's date, more as a status date. The applicant said they wanted to speak with the city engineers department to get further comments back before them, and to speak with them regards to a peer review. So at this point in time, may we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett, 491 Dutton Street in Lowell represent the applicant. Mr. Chairman, over the course of the last two weeks, there's been a significant amount of activity that occurred pertaining to the site. In retrospect, when you look back at the first meeting, it was July 21, and there's been significant work done, significant information provided to the city, and significant improvements to the site relative to the feedback that we've received. In the last two weeks, the applicant has engaged the services of a geotechnical engineer, and they have submitted a analysis of the site, and Mr. O'Hara will be speaking relative to the impact of that report and the interaction with the city, specifically through Mr. Katie and the engineering department. And, you know, we feel very comfortable that, at this point in time, you know, there is a consensus that the proposal as presented with changes, certain changes that Mr. O'Hara will speak to, relative to the slope and things of that sort, that takes into account the analysis from the geotechnical engineer. Also, since the last meeting, there was a question about stormwater analysis, and Mr. O'Hara has done a pre- and post-stormwater runoff analysis, and that everything is satisfactory relative to being consistent with what would be the expectations from the perspective of the city Lowell in their expectations for development of a site like this. You know, again, this is a site that, going back to our first meeting in July, you know, all the property is already on the existing ways, so there's no new infrastructure in terms of roadways being created, and we have taken into account all the questions, all the requests for information, and the analysis is now going to be in this plan that Mr. O'Hara will review with the board tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over. And just as a point of reference, we do have principals from the applicant here tonight with us in the audience. So, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, David. For the record, Mark O'Hara, O'Hara Engineering, 21 Mansion Drive, Lowell, Mass. As David mentioned, we had made a lot of progress with the city. I met with Joe Katie, I believe it was. I was here for another meeting. It was the Wednesday, two days after the public hearing, and mentioned to him the situation that we're in, looking for third-party review. Was there any chance we could, you know, go ahead and try to find somebody who specializes in geotechnical engineering? And he said, if you can find somebody that's, you know, willing and has the credentials that I'm looking for to give me that comfortability, then I'm okay with that. And with stormwater, that's Gordon's area, so address Gordon's concerns. But I would also like to see a pre- and post-development analysis done on the site. So we have other stormwater standards that apply to subdivisions as opposed to like these A&R plans. The A&R was designed in accordance with the MS4 program because it's difficult to design an A&R plan with stormwater controls for like the whole site. We don't have the area to do that. So we designed individual infiltration trenches for the lots that are out on Christian Street, and infiltration drywells for the rooftop runoff. So I performed that analysis and determined what the flow rates were, maximum runoff flow rates from the pre-development and the post-development. The pre-development, it being an orchard with one single-family house, and in the post-development, since we're going to be replanting trees in the middle in accordance with the design, with the landscaping plan that Angie put together, the street trees in the front, offsetting the stormwater, the roofs going into the drywells, all 17 lots and then nine lots having the overflow, the drywells, and the driveway going into the expansion of the existing infiltration trenches that the city had installed recently on a portion of Christian Street. So we implemented their design standard with an eight-inch perforated pipe surrounded by three feet by two feet of stone. But one of the recommendations that Gordon had was, can you increase that to a three-foot depth, which is what we did. That increased the capacity in that trench by 50% because it was only two feet by three feet wide. Now it's three feet by three. So we made those changes. It was difficult trying to find the right geotechnical engineer. I originally spoke with a good friend of mine who was a structural engineer. He gave me a reference to another engineer in PBD who gave me a reference to another engineer in New Hampshire, his name, Mr. Weatherby. And I got on the phone with Harry. He's actually a local guy. He grew up in the city of Lowell, lived here until he was six, moved over to the Parker Village area of Drakeet, and actually ended up going to college here at UMass Lowell for engineering. He specializes in soils. Even though he's based out of New Hampshire, most of his work is in the coastline of New Hampshire, going down into Boston. Mentioned he was doing the development on Breed's Hill in Boston in Charlestown, and that slope was going to be at a 1.75 or whatever to one slope. But he's a wealth of knowledge, explained the soils to me in a way that I could understand, which is probably a way, if I can understand it, I think anybody else could. But like I had mentioned before, these soils in New England were all caused by the last glacier, 10,000, 15,000, 20,000 years ago, when it retreated, it had a mile of ice on it. Those soils that were underneath the ice were so consolidated by the weight, 300,000 pounds per square foot, that those soils, the basal tills, are very structurally sound. What Harry said was, we don't design for those soils. Professor Tanger of UMass Lowell, remember, you do the fee analysis and do, we design for loose soils because most of the world is not compacted from ice. And in those loose soils, we can do, or he can do, I wouldn't be comfortable doing it, but he could perform calculations to show the stability of the site. He asked me what the site was designed to. I told him two-to-one slope because that's an engineering standard. Mass Highway says two-to-one slope, so they're standard. Anything steeper than that, he's special design. And he said, could you go with a two-and-a-half-to-one slope for the fill soils, which would be the houses behind Llewellyn Street, I should say, the slope that's behind the houses that are proposed on Llewellyn Street? And I said, we have no problem doing that. We could even go flatter, but the more flatter, the flatter you go, the more air you disturb, and we're trying to keep the amount of disturbance to a minimum. So in his report, he had that recommendation of a two-and-a-half-to-one slope. We went ahead and revised that slope on the plans, made some other minor changes. I spoke with another friend who also was, you know, dabbles in hydraulics and engineering, and he recommended that the infiltration drywells that were proposing for the other houses, not on Christian, but on Llewellyn and reservoir, be moved to the front to be farther away from that slope. So Mass DEP, their design standards for detention basins is a three-to-one slope. Any type of situation where you're impounded water, they want it to be flatter. That's another design standard. We're not impounded water, but we are trying to reinfiltrate some of the water into the ground through the drywells. So we relocated those to the fronts of the lots. It was an easy change to make, made some other revisions to the plans. We still have the one item that has not been resolved, and that is with the curbing. I spoke with Joe Katie about the vertical granite curbing, and his primary concern, it wasn't really about the cost of materials or whatever, he said that the vertical granite curb is going to hold up better. If water is coming down the hill and it makes its way behind the curb, if you have a bituminous curb, then it can undermine the soils that are behind the curb and create a new path, and that's just going to lead to a failure much sooner than if it was granite. Those curbs that are out there, the high-profile bituminous, we're proposing a cut in a driveway, but what's also shown in the plan is, we're trying to keep the water that's on the street on the street, and we're trying to keep the water that's on the site on the site. They don't like it when driveway runoff or runoff from your development goes out into the street, and the landowners don't like it, you probably, they get phone calls, when the runoff from the street goes into a private property. So we designed these driveways to have a lip at the street, then a low point, and then they come back up to the garages. So I told, I mentioned to Joe that that's how we were going to address it, and he says, well, you can speak, I spoke with both Joe and with Gordon this afternoon, and they both said that, you know, you can tell them that we spoke and that we're in agreement with what these proposers, what these proposed changes have done. I didn't know if we're going to get a letter from Joe. I thought that, he said there might have been a chance he could get one, but Gordon was too busy, and I didn't speak to him until I think it was 4:30 this afternoon. But I did speak with both of them, and their concerns have been addressed. It's really the matter of this curbing that is still up in the air. I think it can be addressed with the curbing being properly installed with the driveways, especially on Christian Street. And as one final note, I know people have expressed concern about the slopes and the drainage that are out there. That's been my concern as well, and it's for good reasons. It's a steep site. Christian Hill, at the steepest part, is 14% slope. If you go over to Llewellyn, the next street over at the very bottom, that's a 20% slope, which is really scary. They've got the Jersey berries down the end. I would not go near that street in the wintertime. I don't, because it's, I don't know how the people navigate that or if they avoid it too. But I think I had mentioned also, like, this is just to give you an understanding of these soils that are out there and the slopes of the road. Christian Hill is pretty much all developed with the exception of this site and where the reservoir is at the very top of the hill. That's not going to be developed. They did cut down some trees. But Christian Street, as I had mentioned before, the Drumlins, the type of, I guess, the type of glacial deposits that are in this area, it's called the Drumlin, and tend to be steeper on the north side, northwest side, and flatter on the southeast side. And so when I took a couple instrument readings with my survey equipment of Christian Street, 14% slope out in the front of the site up towards the top of it, but if, once you go past the hill and start going down, that slope increases to an 18% slope, which is even steeper. These would not meet any of the current design standards of the city. Most cities and towns are between eight and 12 for a maximum slope, but these are the roads that exist. They've been there for over 100 years. Some of it's been there over 150 years. It just is what it is, but they've been there, and we're not creating any new roads. I also looked at the slopes of the banks that are up on the reservoir, and I took a couple of readings. The one that the tanks were impounded in the ground, that slope is a 1.75 to one, which is steeper than what we're proposing, is a two-to-one, and then the bank that's actually holding back the impound in the water, that is a 2.25 to one slope. I'm just bringing this up just to give you an idea of slopes that exist in that area, and they've existed for much longer than any of us have been here, and they will continue to exist at that slope. I mean, I don't know what happens when you take down the trees, but those slopes typically, when they're stabilized with vegetation, it's usually only when you disturb that vegetation and remove it that the slopes could become potentially compromised. So we have that report from Harry. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. We didn't submit it. I didn't receive it until Thursday night, and then we submitted the materials. One other thing I want to bring up, I know that there was some comment about the NPDES. When we applied for that back in April, it goes through the EPA, and it has to be certified by the signatory, who was the owner of the property. Somehow that got lost in internet space or whatever, but I spent the weekend with Mike, sorry about that, before and after the Patriots game and on Saturday, trying to get that resolved. It is the most difficult website I've ever had to deal with in my entire life. They don't work in the weekends, but we got it resolved this morning, and we have a file number with that, with the EPA. So we've addressed all of those concerns as well. Like I said, the plans have been updated, but the main concern, I think, or the three items that I think are still kind of out there, is the curbing. What else was there? Really, it's just the curbing. Oh, and, you know, the engineering calculations which had been performed. Neither Joe nor Gordon was requested a review letter. You guys have more clout than I do, but they would provide a letter if you need one. In principle, everything we discussed and with Joe with the curbing, he said, if you can make a good reason as to why you can comply with the bituminous curbing, then I'll hear it out. But, you know, it's really up to you, I think, when it comes to that curbing. I will say that typically in these type of developments that are in rural-ish area, for the other ones that I do are at this density or greater, meaning, well, greater, I would say, when the lots are this size or larger, we typically request a waiver for granite curbing. Rarely do we ever get it, but as I had mentioned, in other cities and towns, Drakeet, for example, they've revised their roadway requirements, and they are trying to go away from vertical granite curbing and wide roads. Their new standard is a 22-foot wide road, and if you can do New Hampshire country-style drainage, it's actually preferred. So things are kind of constantly evolving. But the curbing thing is, I'm just trying to present what we're offering, and I think we're, would be more than happy to discuss it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Plunkett, anything you want to say? I know we're here for a status hearing, so it's not a public hearing, so we can't vote tonight. And we're still waiting for the, when we continue it, the request was for a status hearing to convince the engineering and wastewater that you could give them satisfactory information, and they will look it over and let us know. So we haven't received the report from either one of those, and we're still at a status hearing, so we'd have to continue to a public hearing regardless. But I know the feeling of myself is, I'd want to see that report from the engineer and the wastewater. And today was for the status hearing, not the public hearing to continue. So I understand you spoke with them, but obviously, it's up to the other board members. But like I say, it's a status hearing, so we can't vote on public hearing. So we're going to have to pick another date regardless, and hopefully we'll have those letters. So I'll hear from other board members. Like I say, we're not scheduled for a public hearing. I'll start with you, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, Attorney Plunkett acknowledged the, you know, from where we were in July to where we are now, there's been a lot of progress. But I will say, the items that really were, became a priority over the last two weeks were items that were articulated by engineering and stormwater management in August. So, and we made it clear, those are the items we wanted to have addressed. Material went out to the board this morning at 10 o'clock. So regardless of whether I had a chance to review it, I still, for myself, we want to have in writing the response to engineering reviewing the stormwater calculation. I mean, that was an 84-page report that was sent this morning at 10 o'clock. And obviously, and the changes through the site plan, it looks like an attempt was made to address the concerns, but that were articulated by the engineering department and stormwater management. But again, we have nothing official from either one of those departments saying that they reviewed the material and that they're okay with that. And then the curbing, once again, you know, we need to have something from engineering. For me to deviate from what was their recommendation, I'd want to have something from them. So again, I would agree with the chairman as far as, regardless of what the status of this meeting would be today, I would not be prepared to vote until we've got that, I'll have that clarified by the proper departments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dan O'Leary, any comments? I mean, it was put over for a status hearing, so my opinion is we have to put up a public hearing regardless, but.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I completely agree. I think that we need to hear from the other departments.
Attorney Tenza?
Mr. Chairman, one of the things when I was reviewing this and my notes, it kept coming across having a peer review, and it was my understanding that was related to the slope. And I think that's the biggest, to me, stormwater is going to figure, they're going to do their calculations, and the city departments will figure that out, and they'll give us what they know and give us information as far as how we can make a good decision on that. But, you know, to me, especially after that last meeting on October 20, it seemed to me that we're, we need a peer review, and that's something that I think we need before we can make any decisions on this. I'm going to reiterate what I said back in July, too. I like this project. I really like this project. I'm scared as hell. For the ski slope, I went up again this Saturday and drove around the site, and it concerns me, and I think we need that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, in regards to the peer review report, I mean, the reality is, at the last hearing, the discussion pertained to the comfort level of the city engineer as to information that's provided that establishes a comfort level for saying this makes sense. And, you know, the geotechnical engineer has submitted a report, a significant report, that, and I understand you saying you haven't got the feedback from Mr. Katie or other city, you know, parties that are involved in the process, but, you know, if in fact, at the discussion at the end of the last meeting was, what are we establishing if we can have a report from a duly qualified engineer that isn't connected to the applicant, it's somebody that's a highly qualified geotechnical engineer that was engaged or paid for by the applicant, not the city. And now we say, okay, now we're going to go out and we're going to get another person to review the same thing, he's not aligned with us. We got this person from the perspective of being able to deal with Mr. Katie. Mr. Katie's saying, you get somebody that's qualified, let me take a look at that information, and certainly that's going to be part of the feedback to you. The issue of then saying, now we're going to go and get another peer review of this independent person who's coming now, and now we're talking into January on a project that, you know, again, under the, you know, under the parameters of Massachusetts General laws... laws, this property has the characteristics that allows lots to be considered buildable lots without subdivision approval. We have the ordinance that we're dealing with that says, okay. And I think that, you know, as we said the last time, I think there's been a certain benefit here when you look at all the analysis and, you know, changes to the plan that came about because of this. But the reality is, a subdivision approval is safe ingress and egress to the parcel that's going to act as the building site. Allowance for utilities, allowance for proper sewerage connection, things of that sort. We're not creating any new roads here. We're not putting down new sewer lines. We're not putting down, you know, these streets exist, so it's just the fact that the ordinance says if you have more than three A&amp;Rs, go in for subdivision approval. So that's what we've done, and it's been significant. There's been significant work done that I think was, you know, to the benefit for, you know, that the ordinance and from that perspective worked because we got all this work done and had all this analysis done, and as Mr. O'Hara is saying, okay, I've now taken this information, and I've made the changes. I took that information, I made the changes. I produced the pre-imposed, you know, construction analysis of the wastewater, you know. So now you have this body of information that's going to be significant as opposed to an A&amp;R where you don't have any oversight. Now you did have the oversight. I just don't see where now saying, oh, let's put out another, you know, two months to, November, December, Jan., you know, another three or two and a half months to have somebody else weigh in on something which, under the general laws, says it's not even a subdivision. It's, that's the specific language of the law that says that that's, you know, if you meet this criteria with frontage on the public way and you meet these, you know, square footage requirements, it's not deemed a subdivision. But be that as it may, we're here, we're provided this, and, you know, and again, I think there's been significant work done. I would request that the board look at that report and then look at Mr. Katie's analysis of the information that he received from this geotechnical engineer who was acquired, not because they have any connection to the applicant, they were acquired because of their expertise. And their expertise went into the analysis of the site and provided a full and thorough report for the city to look at, for Mr. Katie to look at, and, you know, it's our request that that be accepted for what it is, a very detailed report by a highly qualified engineer in this very specialized area of review and analysis. So, you know, that would be, you know, my suggestion that we.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, I mean, from my perspective, Mr. Katie, city engineer, on August 5th, is the one that recommended a peer review to perform, be performed by a geotechnical engineer to evaluate the stability of the slope. If Mr. Katie, the city engineer, reviews the material and says, I no longer think that this was required, personally, I'm fine with that.
I would agree.
But that's what we're waiting for the feedback.
Yeah, I would absolutely agree.
That's really where.
I agree. I mean, we've got two reports from Mr. Katie requesting a peer review. We haven't got a report saying we don't need a peer review. So we await his report. We await his report. Don't forget, we're here for a status hearing. We want a status hearing. To pick a public hearing, let's pick a public hearing, go forward and get Mr. Katie's report.
Okay. And I feel comfortable, I spoke with him about this, we talked about third party. He says, if you can find a third party who can write a letter, I'm comfortable with that, being, you know, an independent third party. I didn't know if I could or not, because I designed this to what are generally accepted engineering standards. I looked in the city to see what their regulations talked about with side slopes, and typically they would show that in the cross-section of a roadway, it would show maximum cuts and fills. Some cities and towns are two to one, some are three to one. Lowell did not show theirs, but I went then to Mass Highway, and Mass Highway has a two to one maximum slope without it being engineered or designed as their standard, with the exception of impoundments of water, which would be, you know, for drainage, they recommend a three to one. I feel comfortable, I think I could talk to Joe and say, Joe, can you review Mr. Weatherby's report? Do you have any concerns? We went ahead and changed the slope from two to one to two and a half to one because we could. We could make it three to one, but you just end up altering more land, more disturbance, you know. I'm comfortable with those slopes because that's what I've always designed to, haven't had a slope failure on any of the sites that I've worked on. You'll get rilling, you know, with new soils, and you have to, but once you establish vegetation on a site, typically, you're not going to get a failure unless you disturb it. So that's where the critical time period is, and since we're going with the fill slopes that are two and a half to one, I feel even more comfortable, and like Harry said, that lodgement till has been there for 15,000 years with a mile of ice on top of it. It's a unique type of situation that we're in in New England that we can't really design to, but you can go out to the site where we've cut those soils, and they're at an angle like this, and they have not moved. So the cut soils, I'm comfortable with, but if we need to get a letter from Mr. Katie for the next public hearing, and, I don't know, maybe he'll change his mind, but when I discussed with him tonight, you know, I think we're on the same page and the same thing with Gordon, you know, I wasn't able to get a letter out of them, and I totally understand they didn't get these materials. I did submit the materials to them last Thursday. I said, but I'm still waiting on the NPDES stuff, and I don't want to submit something that hasn't been done yet. We're trying to work through this with the EPA. As soon as I do, I'll get those materials. We got the report from Mr. Weatherby on Thursday night, so I know they work half-days on Fridays, so we just worked on this over the weekend to get that done. Didn't give them enough time to respond. I totally get that. But sure, if we want to move this forward to another meeting, is there any way we could get this in two weeks?
We're here for a public hearing date.
Yeah.
Waiting to hear from you.
Yes.
We're here for status, you're requesting a public hearing? Give us the date request for a public hearing.
Yeah.
We're moving forward. We can't, we're not voting forward or denying it because you asked for a status hearing. We made it clear it's not a public hearing? You're going to submit information? Try to get a report back to us from engineering and stormwater? Pick a public hearing date. Let's move forward.
So the next public hearing available is two weeks from now, correct?
November 17.
And then after that, December, it's December 3?
First, yeah.
Could I just have one moment?
Sure, take your time, Counsel. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, had we penciled them in for two dates?
What's that?
Today and either the December, the January? Did we pencil the hearing in already?
No, I spoke to staff today. We have nothing on the 17th, and we only have Rivers Edge on December 1st. We did put them out to January, and then when we, whichever he withdrew his motion, we took it back and put it on the status today. At first, we went to the 17th of November, then we went to January, then we came back and put it on the status today. Yeah. So we're going to pick a hearing, a public hearing date. All this is nice, but we need a public hearing date.
Mr. Chairman, I have a conflict in two weeks, but I won't have a conflict for the first week in December if we could.
So you requested a continuance for the public hearing to 12/1?
Yes.
Okay.
And in that time period, we'll work on making.
Sure, I mean, you know, obviously, we want the reports from them. I mean, that was part of the status hearing when you requested.
Oh, yeah, I understood. You need something.
You know, I know things take time, so hopefully, the time period in between, things will clarify, we'll go from there. So I'll make a motion that we continue the matter to December 1st for the public hearing.
2nd.
Motion made in 2nd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we'll see everybody back on December 1st. Hopefully, we'll have those reports from the city department. And so thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving along on the agenda, we had a special permit for 88 Weed Street. The applicant had requested a continuance on this matter. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to air all interested persons relative to an application by Mellow Holding LLC to split the existing lot and construct a new single-family home at the above address. The subject property is located in traditional, single-family zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval per Section 5.1.17 of the Lowell zoning ordinance to reduce the required frontage. We did receive a request from the attorneys to continue the matter. Indicated, I guess there was another meeting with the neighbors, they went over some information, and they have to get some more reports back from engineering, so they're requesting a continuance. Anybody want to be heard on a continuance?
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem continuing the matter. I guess, to Dylan, because looking at the submittal, you know, for this special permit, one of the things, taken into account is the design and how it's going to sit. We didn't receive any, any, any design plans, and also, we're looking under special permit, you know, neighborhood character and how does this reduced frontage match what's there? They didn't provide any map of what the surrounding lots look like. So, you know, before that next meeting, they really, I don't think that's submitted properly, so if you could reach out to the applicant and say, look, this is, we need to know how that house is going to sit on that lot. That's if we're going to reduce it. That was the intent of the original ordinance to begin with. So I have no problem continuing it, but, you know, we need that information, otherwise I'm not, I wouldn't be prepared to even make a decision on it, so.
So look what the lot looked like, the house sitting there, and also what the surrounding neighborhood.
The frontage of the surrounding lots.
Okay. So Dylan, is that something you can communicate to the applicant?
Yeah, I can, I can communicate that to the applicant.
Yeah.
The other thing, Mr. Chairman, is existing site conditions, they should indicate what the existing site conditions are now and what they aren't going to be when they make this thing. There are three huge trees in the beginning, in the front of that property. We have no information as to what they're doing with it.
Yeah, no, it was not a good submittal.
Can you put that in the notes as well, Dylan? Okay.
Thank you, Dylan.
Okay. So the request for a continuance, if we're asking that they submit that information instead of giving the two-week date, do you want to give them to the December 1st date to make sure they have adequate time?
I would go with December 1st. Another thing I want to add, the legal submission, and the submission was for Weed Street. The legal posting on the site should be on Weed Street. I, as far as I'm concerned, that was not properly posted on the site.
It was.
It's not, absolutely. If it was two addresses, that'd be one thing, but I wouldn't hear that tonight, to be honest with you. I really wouldn't. I don't think that was posted properly.
I'm sorry.
Does the city post that?
No, the homeowner posted.
Homeowner posts that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it was around the corner. I didn't see it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And if it was two different addresses, you know, it was, but I mean, it's clearly, the application's for 88 Weed Street, so I think they need to move that. If somebody was going to look to see what's going on, if you're walking the neighborhood, you have no idea, your neighbors have no idea something is going on. The houses across the street would have no idea.
So if they're going to push the sign over, just have them change the date like we've had in the past, you know, they can just go and change it to 12/1. So some people go by and see November 3rd and think that was already acted on. We had that done before, remember the one up in the Highlands? You said where your daughter lived right near it?
Yes.
Remember that? That sign was down, they went and they changed the date, then they came back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that'll give adequate time for anybody that's interested.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Fischette to continue to December 1st, and with recommendations given by Mr. Fischette and Attorney Tenza to the applicant to help fulfill the application properly. So we have motion on the floor to continue. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that, but we need the applicant to sign something.
They signed the continuance form.
Oh, they did, okay.
And on the form, it just said to the next available date.
Okay.
They didn't ask for date of 30th, so that should cover us on that.
Okay.
So we have the motion made to December 1st, second by Attorney Tenza. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Cheer, vo, cheer, so that matters, continue to December 1st, 25th as well. Okay. Moving along in the agenda, we have a pre-application hearing. 236 Broadway Street. 236 Broadway Street LLC has requested a pre-application hearing to present proposal plans to construct in addition to the existing building at 236 Broadway Street to include 55 residential units. The planning board will make no decision on this matter. It is for informational purposes, and the planning board will not be voting on this matter. So we hear from the applicant, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Pete Nikosia. I'm a lawyer from Tinsborough, representing the applicant. I have the principals of 236 Broadway LLC, Malley and Palak Patel, who are here with me this evening. You're our final stop on our conceptual analysis tour through the city before we start working towards a revised permitting submission plan set for the various interested boards. So I think we sent you a fairly robust package, at least on a conceptual basis, giving you some idea as to what we're looking to do. This property is probably fairly familiar to you, having been longtime residents of the city. It currently houses an adult daycare facility, and what we're looking to do is basically turn it into a mixed-use property and add residential dwellings on top of it. So, you know, like any developer would, you know, we try to maximize the economic feasibility of the project for the property owner, and then as the city looks to balance the interests of the public and the neighborhood, sometimes those interests clash with one another. But I think what I found in all the years that I've been doing this is that any time you have a project of any magnitude, especially a mixed-use project that, you know, has a blend in the neighborhood of residences and businesses, I think it's important to embark on a conceptual review with the municipality first, because we'd like to have the permit-granting authorities and the department-level folks, you know, put their fingerprints on these projects so that it feels like a public-private partnership before we actually come in for, you know, submission-level permitting. We also have some outreach to the neighborhood that's taking place, you know, because we also want this to be introduced to the neighborhood before they're receiving certified mailings wondering what the heck is going on. So that's what we try to do here. Now, in terms of the chronology of what we've done, we went through the department level first, you know, and got all of the department-level comments. We've also entertained the historic commission in terms of their comments, and then last week, we were here in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals and got their comments as well. All valuable comments, constructive input that are going to result in a revised plan as we move forward. So I'm not going to belabor the project itself because the materials speak for itself. It's a, right now, it's proposed as 55 residential units, a blend of studio, single-family, and two-family, going up on the existing location and keeping the adult daycare on the first The unanimity in terms of the comments that we've received from, you know, all of the feedback so far is that the project is too dense and you don't have enough parking. So I think I would expect to have probably some of those comments coming from the board members tonight because of the character of the neighborhood, the available parking that's on-site, and we actually forecasted that in our, even in our conceptual submission. So I did spend some time in the narrative that I sent to you, sort of articulating the parking mitigation analysis that exists in the area in terms of public transit, you know, area parking garages, you know, biking ability, you know, things of that nature. I think what the applicant, at this point, is committed to do is to pare down the project a bit and reduce the number of residential units. We're not settled on what that number would be, less than 55, but it will be less. And we are actively working to address the parking calculation issue by securing some additional commitment. additional commitments for nearby off-street parking. We do control some now that's currently used in the site, and we do have some parking on-site, but we need some more. So we are working to address that issue as well. From a planning board perspective, I know we're coming in here for a site plan review, and I did see, you know, stormwater management comments from the department raising some concerns there. And I think that will be mitigated by virtue of some of the structural changes that we're going to entertain on the dwelling in terms of stormwater management. And so I think we're prepared to address those as well. And we're going to work with the historic board in terms of refining the, you know, exterior vision of the property. And, you know, the planning board was more concerned with the parking issue than anything else. So this is an open forum for you to provide us with your board-level feedback that we'd like to incorporate into our revisions to these plans. So that's why we're here tonight. So I'm not here to advocate so much. I think the paperwork does that to the degree that it needs to be done this evening. But we'd like to hear your input on how you think this project could be better from what we proposed. I'm also interested, and I've asked this question at all the other conceptual levels, do you feel that the neighborhood would be better served with additional housing opportunities beyond what exists today in terms of creating a mixed-use project? The unanimous feedback that I have received so far has been, yes, they welcome additional residential units in the neighborhood. This is an urban mixed-use overlay district, so it allows for it. And, you know, as we know, affordable or more affordable housing units are necessary for the stock around here. So I'm interested in receiving your feedback in terms of the composition of the mixed-use residential versus commercial. So we do have engineers and architects. I did not bring them tonight, because we're receiving conceptual feedback. They are watching. They are actively involved in the plan revisions. So beyond that, I'd like to open it up to the board members and hear what you have to say, and we'll take account of it and move on and work towards a better plan set.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions? Mr. Tenza?
I have a question for you, Mr. Chairman. First time here, having this type of application while I've been sitting on the board. What is the process? What, what, what is our role here? If you know what I mean.
On a pre-application, they come in, tell us what they think they want to do, and we tell them the things we like or don't like. It's only a conceptual plan. We don't give any positive vote either way. And so it's either by what they submitted, what you may like, what you may not like, or you would have to see more information to make it, you know, to give them some back feedback. So it's either like. So number one, for me, I would usually say, I rely heavily on staff comment. In this here, we have some negative staff comments from planning staff, traffic engineer, historic. And I'd recommend that they go before the historic board before they come before us. We have our representative here from the historic board. I think a lot of, most of the time, people do go before historic before they come before us. But in a case like this, so basically, you look at this, 55 units. Do you think that's too many? Doesn't have enough parking. You think the parking's not sufficient? Traffic engineers talked about that. So basically, it's, they get a free swipe at us, what we're thinking.
Got it.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
And nothing that we say is binding.
Yeah.
I'm like, so say if you say, "Well, I want X number of parking spots." That doesn't mean you come to a public hearing, it has to be that number. Or you could say, "I like the project. It looks good. I'm satisfied with what you have so far." Or, "By reading all the comments, it looks like it's too big. You don't have enough parking." There's a lot of staff comments, which we highly rely upon.
Got it.
So basically, it's them getting them. Actually, before, we never even got comments on a pre-op.
Hmm.
The city department says, "Nothing to do with us. It's a pre-op, you guys handle it." A lot of other cities and towns don't get the pre-op comments.
Okay.
So they're lucky that they come in, they get this. And if anybody's here, I always let them speak, even though it's not a public hearing, because it benefits the applicant anyways.
Sure.
As you and I know as attorneys, at least you know who's speaking against you when you come back. So it's nice to think, "What's he going to say?"
Yep.
Like a deposition.
Yeah.
So you say, "Sure, I'll listen to what they have to say." And then if they speak favorably, usually the applicant says, "Can you come to the next meeting?" You know? So basically, so there's no parameters except for your initial feelings towards the project.
Okay.
Can I make a couple of points to that?
Sure.
That are related to it? Nothing that you're saying here tonight is binding. So I'm not, you know, if you make a positive comment or a negative comment, you know, it's not held against you in terms of a public hearing when we have an actual permit hearing in front of you. So don't worry about that. It's meant to be an open forum. So, you know, it's measured twice and cut once. And I, what I've found over the years is, you know, some municipalities have a formal process for these pre-hearing reviews, like Lowell actually does. Most smaller cities and towns don't have it. And we approach them on a voluntary basis, and it's normally received well, because, you know, it cuts down on the number of public hearings we're going to have to come to. It's going to cut down on engineering peer review and department peer review, and it's going to save us some money as well. And it also shows that we're trying to take into account the city's zoning planning objectives. I agree with you chronologically, once we're done our peer review. We did go through Stevens-Sowell first, and, but when we embark on formal permitting, I agree with you, we're going to be going to historic, the full commission first, because we want to iron out those issues there. And then we'll move on to zoning and planning thereafter. So I agree with you.
So most likely, you're going to need to go to the zoning board of appeals as well as?
We have to go to both.
The planning board, okay.
Yep.
But I believe three.
Go to both and historic.
Okay. So you have three boards, yep.
Yep. So I, again, I'm just looking for your, you guys sit at the board level, you approve site plans all the time, you approve special permits and mixed-use projects all the time. I want to hear what you like and you don't like.
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem telling people what I like or don't like.
We've noticed that.
Attorney Tenza, I know you.
We've noticed that.
So I already know this.
So Attorney Nikosia, I do appreciate that, the fact that I didn't know what this was when I saw it, I read through it, I'm like, "Pre-application, what are we doing here?" And I like the idea. I appreciate the fact that you're coming to listen to and take in the input from the various boards and the departments. You know, obviously, we may have differences. I mean, that's just the way things are. When I drove by there, I was like, "They're sharing parking with the senior center?" I was shaking my head. And then I looked at the plan, and it said, I swear, it said something like 9,000 square feet. Like, 9,000 square feet? That's the footprint of the building. So the site itself has no parking?
No, the site, there is parking on the site. Malley, why don't you come up? You can speak to the issue in terms of the off-site that we lease.
Okay, so there, so there might be parking that you're leasing, but it is not part of the property that you own.
Some of it is.
So currently, we have, so the way the nature of the building is.
Yeah.
Currently, there's a landlord, so senior center also doesn't have a parking. So neither, any of those business owners or senior center, they do not own any parking whatsoever. We are leasing. Every one of us are leasing a parking spot.
Who are you leasing it from?
Nick Sarris.
Hmm. Interesting.
Right. So Lowell and Still, so we share the parking with the Lowell senior center, Walgreens, you know.
Okay.
For rehabs.
And you're sharing that presently? It looked like it went around the building. It goes around the back. I only thought, until I went to see your project, or your intended project, I only thought there was parking in the front of the senior center. And then I drove around the backside, and I saw a whole brand-new part of Lowell I hadn't seen. There were trees going along a canal. I have no idea what street it was, but it was beautiful. Place in the acre. Okay, so your property, you don't own any parking spaces, you lease them?
Correct.
From somebody?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Yeah, my biggest problem was, and it always has been, is parking in this city. I'm sure, like Attorney Nikosia mentioned, everybody is saying that 55 units, I don't know, depending on the bedrooms, I don't know how many you'd need, you know, maybe, you know, 75 or 80 or something, something up there. But I also looked around and looked at the buildings, and what struck me is, is, wow, this is, this is going to be like Post Office Square. It's just going to stick up out of nowhere. And what struck me was, is that, what was it, adding seven stories? Just, just too much. It seemed to me that the biggest the buildings were, were generally two stories, although your building out front is three.
Correct.
Yeah. And then a lot of the buildings around it are two stories, and then it has the, you know, the walk-up attic, or whatever. So my immediate reaction was, is that three stories is probably more than this neighborhood can handle. And I'm not sure what type of units would be put in, but the real question would be is, okay, do you have the parking? How long is it leased for? Is it long-term? You know, those types of things, you know, as you know, Attorney Nikosia. But that was my biggest thing. You want to talk design, talk to Jerry. You know, when you're looking at the buildings and how they face and what their look should look like, I, I think the idea is interesting, but I think it's way too big. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Lucie, have any questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also applaud you during a pre-application session with each board. You had mentioned that you've started talking to the residents surrounding the area.
Yeah, we've had some casual conversations. Before we really press into the neighborhoods, we want to make sure that we're coming with a plan that's going to be close to the one that we're going to be pushing forward. I don't want to scare them with an elephant when it's really going to be a zebra. You know what I'm saying, in terms of the height of this thing?
So is there a general consensus so far?
So the feedback that I've received so far from department level and the zoning board of appeals, I mean, eight stories, too much. Three stories, not enough. Maybe something in the middle would make sense. We don't have to be identical to the neighborhood, but I think there was a tolerance for some height increase. The question is, how much of a height increase? So when we were at the zoning board of appeals, I think people were thinking like, you know, at least shave off a couple of floors, maybe five, six floors, or something like that. There were some of the comments to that effect. And again, it's going to depend on the blend of units, number of bedrooms and things. Architectural style will be a factor in terms of how the neighborhood receives it. You know, we're not trying to create an eyesore, we're not trying to make something that's so out of touch with the zoning character of the entire neighborhood that it will shock the conscience. But I do think the community should have some tolerance for some change over there to achieve some of the housing goals, so.
So you've not had any actual neighborhood meetings?
No, 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 not that level yet. No, we will. You know, once we refashion these plans, I think we'll move on. Probably concurrent, we'll start that as we embark on the historic commission process. We'll probably do that at the same time.
Sure. I mean, my two cents is, yes, the neighborhood could definitely use more housing. I do think the scale is a lot to wish for.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained.
I mean, economic feasibility, as you said, but I think whatever goes there should fit within the character of that neighborhood, particularly because it's in a historic area of Lowell. And that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Vichette?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm really going to speak from the 30,000-foot level on this. You know, one of the criteria, counsel, as you'll go through your application, is going to be the application to the master plan, and the master plan clearly talks about creating housing units in the city of Lowell, so it's not, you know, that's consistent with what we're looking for. This board has literally, in the last couple of years, approved hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of units, more so than our neighbors in the surrounding us. And I like the idea of the mixed-use. Matter of fact, DPD has been frustrated, we have, is, from a planning perspective, everybody loves in the city the idea of mixed-use. In reality, it's, if you're just looking for rental dollars, you get more bang for your buck making everything residential all the way down to the floor, right? First floor. So I love that. It's a complementary use to the senior center, the adult daycare. We've got the market basket, so I mean, from a mixed-use perspective, it is, gets some idea from where I'm coming from. And I have no problem, we have the MBTA zoning district, and we have the high-rise district, mid-rise district, and we have, you know, the no-parking requirements in certain of the denser downtown areas. And that's by design, right? Creating a critical mass to hopefully support some businesses. But as we start to peel back, then there's, by design, there's a kind of, you know, all right, we do need parking here. This is auto-oriented. You look at that parking lot at Market Basket, it's full. A lot of the seniors that go to the senior center, they drive over there. It is, it is auto-oriented in that immediate area, as well as foot traffic. So there's a combination of that. So I would agree with the chairman, and it looks like you're going to go that path. I would want to see, for the most part, the finished version of the elevation of the building when you're coming before us. It has a lot to do with how we feel it fits in. I will tell you, I don't always agree with Steve Stoll in the historic board, but certainly I would prefer that you go that route. And I would be mindful of the parking, and I understand trying to make it maximize the economic return on that, but in a way that, quite frankly, if you try to put too much in there, and you may have the opposite effect that you think you're going to get from an economic return, to be honest with you, so.
I think Steve was pretty clear in my communications with him, that he's looking to work with us. I think he recognizes the fact that, just like the economic objectives of the developer and the zoning, planning objectives of the town are at odds, sometimes the historic perspective is at odds with the zoning, planning objectives of the city as well.
Sure.
And so I think he needs to, he understands that he's going to work with us towards that end result, and invited those continued discussions. So I'll certainly do that. And it is our plan, once we do pare this down to a different project, before we file for public hearing, I will run it through the department level at least for another quickie review before we come out of the gate.
And I will give you something to ponder here. I deal, and I know a lot of builders, I know a lot of high-end builders here in the city, and a lot of them that aren't happy with the fact that there is no parking requirement from some developments.
Yeah.
And to be honest with you, their thought on all of that is, they're going to build developments that has parking, and as things start to turn around, they're going to be able to get the rents that are going to command the return on the investment compared to the units that are being built right now without parking requirements. So when you're thinking about your return on your investment and the type of tenant you're going to be able to track, there's some value to having that as well. So we try to, we're trying to measure all those scales and understand the certain, the certain tenants that we're looking for and that we're trying to achieve housing for all levels, but there is some value to having parking available to your units. And where you're located, it's just as much auto-oriented than anything else. So keep that in mind.
Understood.
Thank you.
Good comment. Thank you.
The only comment I have is, I was happy to hear that you're willing to consider being reducing the number of units in the height of the building, because from the comments that we received, basically, everybody thought there was basically too much in that neighborhood. So.
Yeah.
I'm glad you're willing to reconsider, and we'll see what you have to bring up in the future.
All right, really appreciate your time, and if we don't see you sooner, have a happy holiday.
Okay.
Attorney Tenza, we'll see you in the neighborhood.
Absolutely. I'll see you, Peter.
Uh-oh. Okay, moving along, do we have any further comments? Any board members?
Lowell Sunsign.
That's good, yes.
Oh, yeah?
Last Monday was the relighting of Lowell Sunsign.
Yeah.
I think it was, it was last Monday.
Yeah, I think it was.
Yeah, that was through the historic board, right?
On the date.
Yeah, I see the historic board, it was big on that, they quoted Steve in the paper. Yeah, it's nice to see that's going back up, a lot cheaper with the lighting and everything, yeah.
Yeah.
I just wish there were rolls of paper rolling underneath there and gallons of ink I just wish there were rolls of paper rolling underneath there and gallons of ink and people working under there, printing the newspaper.
So you don't have to read.
That's the old days, unfortunately.